All right, I call this meeting of Sylvania City Council for May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Fry.
Here.
Mr. Hanson.
Here.
Mr. Hanum.
Here.
Mr. McCann.
Here.
Mr. Richardson.
Here.
Ms. Dow.
Here.
Mrs. Westfall.
Here.
All seven members of City Council are present, therefore a forum exists for tonight's meeting. I welcome all of you that are here for tonight's meeting. I know we have several champions in the room and we welcome them. We also welcome the Fire Department and our other citizens as well. Please join us in our pledge of allegiance, this meeting led by Mr. Hanum.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Additions to the agenda, I have none this evening. Mr. Fry.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Members of City Council.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hanson.
Just wondering if you could just add a brief summary on the proposed sheet's location.
Aye, yes. Let's add that. Let's add it as seventeen A. I'm not sure it's in committee, but that's an appropriate spot for it. So let's do that. We do have a short update and it is reflected in the Plan Commission and Board of Architectural Review Minutes or in your council package as well. Anything else from members of City Council? Mr. Sanford.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Captain Eubaker.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schroyer.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
And Kevin Aller.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Andor Joe Shaw.
Nothing.
This is an important meeting tonight. This is actually Kevin Aller's last council meeting before he retires. So he's on the job for, to the end of next week. With that, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Seconded. The move as seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries and our agenda for this evening's meeting is approved as amended. Agenda item four is approval of our meeting minutes from our last meeting on May the sixth. Mr. Fry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move adoption of the meeting minutes for the council meeting of May sixth, two thousand and twenty-four as submitted.
Seconded.
The move as seconded to approve the meeting minutes for May sixth as presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries and those May sixth meeting minutes are approved. We're up to agenda item five. We're going to have a presentation tonight of being a certified autism center. Mr. Sanford.
Thank you, Mayor. In a while back, we had came to council and council approved the expense to, for the city and council members to go through training for the autism. Training that seems to be the chamber here in Sylvania has been certified as has, I see more and more, but we're out on front of something that I think you're going to see across the country with other communities. So the International Board of Credentially sent us this very nice certificate that we'll need to and plaque and on it says that the city of Sylvania has successfully fulfilled the requirements as a certified autism center. And I wondered if Mr. Fry could come down. We'd like to formally give it to you as president of council and again, thank you, council members, for your supporting this and taking part in it and then we'll definitely be able to put this in either here at council or in city.
Got it? Thank you. Mr. Sanford and Mr. Fry for your leadership on this issue. Agenda item six, we are privileged tonight to have state champions in our council meeting. Council has traditionally recognized all state champions by inviting them to a council meeting and presenting them with a proclamation and we have new, a new category, esports state champions here tonight. So if all those champions could come up here to the podium and throw up and I will come down there and present you with this proclamation. That'll be just fine right there. Thank you all for being here tonight. This is what I'm going to present and I'm going to read it and then I'll present it. You can pass it down the line and you can hand it to your folks. This is a proclamation of the office of the mayor of the city of Sylvania. Whereas Esports Ohio is an educational nonprofit created by teachers for students to participate in electronic sports video games that can be played individually or as a team. And whereas Esports Ohio mission is to empower students by providing educational institutions with knowledge, direction, support, and resources to educate and compete in electronic sports. And whereas Sylvania Northview High School's esports recently won the two thousand and twenty-four Ohio State Championship in Super Smash Brothers. Which you'll have to explain to me what that is. And whereas the Northview esports team defeated Dublin Kaufman High School student on April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four at the University of Akron to capture the state championship. And whereas the members of the Northview esports, high school esports team are Gavin Matt. Should wave. Asher Hansel, Jamison Pruss, Kayden Shirk, and they are coached by Nathaniel Long and Aaron Hassel. Now therefore I, Craig A. Stow, Mayor, do hereby proclaim today, Monday, May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, as Sylvania Northview High School Esports Team Day in the city of Sylvania. And all of you, our congratulations. We don't get, we do this for all state champions, but we really don't get to do it that often. So thank you all for being here. And we're going to get some pictures taken here. Move in closer. All right, we're all set? Congratulations to all of you and tell me what Smash Mouth Brothers is.
Go ahead, Tom. Glad you wanted to.
Smash Brothers is best described as a one versus one fighting game with all of the famous Nintendo characters that you remember, so Super Mario, Princess Peach, and Bowser, and Pac-Man, and all sorts of characters.
And these are skills that will carry you forward, I think, in your education.
Absolutely.
There are, I'm sure there's scholarships available. Lawrence University has a wonderful game room over there if you've not seen it.
We actually work.
And more and more universities, not just high schools, have esports teams that are competing nationally as well. So thank you for representing our community so successfully.
Congratulations.
We are now up to agenda item seven. We're also privileged tonight to have representatives of Sylvania Township and the Sylvania Township Fire Department to give us an update on what's going on in the Fire Department. This was precipitated by the change in leadership in the Fire Department, but they're going to give us an update on the operations of the department at the same time. So I think starting will be Township Administrator Oliver Turner. But we also have the two chiefs with us as well, who I'm sure he will introduce.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, Mayor, City Council, and City Administration. Thank you for the opportunity to attend this meeting and for the opportunity to share updates on the Sylvania Fire Department. As mentioned, my name is Oliver Turner and I serve as the Sylvania Township Administrator. This evening, I'm joined by Acting Fire Chief Chris Nye and Assistant Fire Chief Jeff Bennett. We look forward to this conversation about departmental activities, leadership transitions, patient care excellence, and our focus on partnership and communication. Like many public safety agencies, Sylvania Fire works tirelessly to deliver quality service as our landscape for retirements, employee recruitment, and employee retention continuously evolves. The recently approved retirement in the role of Fire Chief, as well as recent transitions and other key positions, does demand a high level of our focus and attention. At the same time, and thanks to deliberate planning and ongoing investments in employee development by the township and the trustees, the department is fortunate to have a deep bench of experienced leaders and public servants. This talent level and organizational knowledge base is the foundation for ensuring department operations continue without any interruption amidst any personnel changes. It also forms a foundation for future leadership of the department. Please to announce that tomorrow afternoon, the Board of Trustees will consider a resolution to officially appoint Acting Fire Chief Chris Nye as the Fire Chief. Chris has served the community for thirty-five years. He served at every level within the department and has a clear vision for service to our community, citizens, and neighbors. Chris is joined by Assistant Fire Chief Jeff Bennett, who is promoted from the position of Training and Safety Captain in March. Jeff has served the community for twenty-four years and has made immediate contributions to the department. Both Chief Nye and Chief Bennett place integrity, accountability, and quality at the heart of their work and at the center of their vision. At this time, if it pleases the council, I'll turn this over to Assistant Chief Jeff Bennett for updates regarding operations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Just a brief update, wanted to fill you in a little bit on how we've been serving the Sylvania community and in particular, the city of Sylvania. And then I'll hand off to Chief Nye so he can talk about how often we're serving you. But just a little update on our community that we're covering in our square footage. Obviously, you probably already know that, but just in case anybody in the audience wasn't sure. These are some of the high hazard areas. We call them those because they're areas that would be difficult to handle in situations, whether it be water supply, population, location, that kind of stuff. These are all locations in the city. They're all locations that we keep a regular eye on and we train on so that we can prepare and be ready if a hazard were to occur there. And then these are some of the programs that we've been going and doing on and on for quite some time. Possibly with lack of communication with the city, you may not be aware of them. We hope that you are, but I wanted to just highlight a few of them. Safety City and our safety festivals and the Fall Festival are all things that we do. When I was searching for pitchers to come up, surprisingly enough, the first two pitchers that came up was Chief Nye working with a young resident. And I look a bit different, but that's my alter ego, Mo the Fire Clown, that I use for teaching fire safety. It just goes to show that our commitment from the department has been long going and obviously recognized in pitchers. All these other organizations we work with, the Hero Program allows us to work with residents and keep them in their homes as long as possible. We do fire detector, smoke detector installs and then obviously work all the big public events with a lot of visitation. And with that being said, I'll hand off to Chief Nye. He can tell you a little bit about how often we've been doing those things.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Happy to be here, happy to be the new Fire Chief. Visit tomorrow. Been here thirty-five years, lived almost my whole life here in Sylvania. I lived on Talma Jim McGregor, so most of my friends were Sylvania people. But I'm going to keep boring you with all that nonsense, but just going back through some of our yearly incident totals, you can see back our total incidents, twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-three. There's about a fifty percent increase there in just that timeframe. You will see a little bit of a drop there in twenty twenty, that's our COVID year. So you know, everybody was sheltered and living at home, so there wasn't as many incidents out there for that type of stuff. We did have the COVID, the COVID stuff. The one of particular concern is the overlapping incidents to us. And what that, what that signifies is we have a minimum of seventeen people on duty plus a battalion chief. And what that is, is when there's one call out, there's another call that's going to come in and overlap that timeframe. So that depletes our resources significantly. Most EMS incidents alone take three to five people. If it's a cardiac arrest, it can take eight to twelve people, depending on what that situation is. So that really depletes our resource availability significantly. So we're looking to hopefully impact that as much as we can. We've, we have hired additional staff, but as you can see, that number still continues to stay in that fifty to sixty percent range. So that's a significant concern for us. It elongates response times going from, you know, Station Three down to Monroe and Whiteford. It's got to go clear out to the west end of town. It's not good for service. Transport totals, as you know, we went back in, we were forced to go back into the transport business several years ago due to the lack of resources available from the private services. That continues today and it escalates today. As you can see, when we, when we got back into transporting in twenty seventeen, you know, there was two thousand, now we're at forty-two hundred incidents, twenty-eight hundred of those being our own Sylvania units. And then fourteen hundred of those, that one four zero six in twenty twenty-three is actually the only number of Life Squad transports in the Sylvania Township service area. That doesn't count any of their calls that they went to Toledo or Springfield or Richfield. So that's an additional fourteen hundred calls a year that are going to be, that are our customers. So with that, I know you're all briefly aware of this Lucas County EMS transition to, or reform as they call it. For some of us, it's not exactly reform, but we're going to, we're doing the best we can. I can tell you that June, June third was supposed to be the date by contract. We were well prepared before that. We were ready by January one to go and we are today. Our date for Sylvania has been pushed back to August fifth. So the only two jurisdictions that are going to go on June third are Jerusalem Township and Oregon. That's going to give the county some time and every, all the entities to work out any bugs that, that may be foreseen, which is something we maybe should have done a little bit better with the RCOG, but I think they learned from that mistake. Right now, you've, for years and years and years, you've seen that truck, orange and white, running around town. It's not going to be that anymore. It's going to be our truck. We were actually very fortunate because we were the next Lucas County Life Squad in line to get a new one. It was already on order when all this transition took place, so we were fortunate enough to get it painted our colors before it was delivered. The only difference you'll notice is it won't have the roll-up doors on the side. Those roll-up doors are for personal protective equipment, so we have to do something a little different in that truck just to keep the carcinogens and stuff away from our personnel and the patients. Some of the behind the scenes changes that you'll see. Help me understand that top bullet point again.
So basically, we will have full utilization of our crew, so we'll decide where they're staffed, where they're located, what stations. We'll have full control of where those units are staffed and where they run out. Where Lucas County used to have a set area, we could only have them in one location.
Dr. Brookins, Todd Brookins is now, has been our medical director here locally for Sylvania Township. He also is for Richfield, Springfield, and most of the western suburbs. So that, that transition to a lot smaller microcosm of people to be properly trained and advanced skills. It also increases our number of Life Squads with this whole deployment from one across the street here to all of our transport units. Decrease scene times, we just spoke a little bit more about that, but with one being at, we basically have them in a triangle, so that should shorten all the response times and one unit will do everything. A lot of times we would get a complaint that why are there three, a fire truck, an ambulance, a white one, and then a red one? So now it's all going to be the red and black one and they can do it all. Because all we hire is paramedics, so they can go from BLS to ALS. We're currently working, Chief Bennett's been coordinating that whole program for continuing education. That was our, our little Achilles heel in this whole transition process was how, how we were going to be trained and continue to be trained. So Chief Bennett has been working with our neighboring partners here. I think we've got seven or eight departments on the western suburb here who all have the, have the same medical director or a very similar, Dr. Tom Boggs from down in Perrysburg is a couple of them. But they get together very well, him and Todd, and we're going to be putting that all together. So we'll have, everybody will be trained the same. So you won't see any decrease in service, it's going to be a better service. Yeah, you want it.
So just to finish up real quick here, I know we're running a little short on time, but primarily the idea of this slide is we do want you to know that Chief and I are committed to having an open flow of communication to the city. I know it's been lacking in the past, starting with this meeting tonight, Mayor's meeting that we've already been to, and an open invitation to anybody that wants to give us a call for information at any time they want it. And we show that by putting our actions before our words with the most recent Whiteford Diesel leak that took place way up on twenty-three, two twenty-three. Sylvania was not notified of any hazard to them whatsoever. They notified the city of Toledo and tried to have them watch the end of that line to see if there was any product coming down. I immediately stepped in, contacted the scene command, told them that that's great that Toledo's watching, but our community here in Sylvania is at risk and I want to make sure that we're, we're being taken into account. That immediately put me on, on the advisory part of their daily reports. And I immediately contacted the Safety Director's Office to make sure, and the Police Department, to make sure that they could help monitor things as well to make sure that our city community was safe as the diesel possibly could have traveled through the Tenmont Creek along there. So. That's just an example of what you can look forward to in the future of us overseeing, watching things that aren't on the radar and then putting you on the radar to make sure that you're well aware of what's going on. But like I said, we'll, we'll be attending regular meetings with the mayor, city council meetings whenever you, you welcome us. We are going to make sure we have administrative dialogue with Oliver and, and your leaders. And then we're looking at building a new training tower behind our station number four. We are looking to welcome the Police Department to use those facilities once they get going. I think they would be of value to them to practice entry and that type of things. We look forward to that, that relationship in the future. And just to accept. Increased availability, whenever you want us, feel free to give us a call and we'll make sure any reports that we create get sent to you as well so that you can keep up to date. We happy to answer any questions.
Chiefs, we appreciate your commitment to better communications. There's always been good coordination, I think, between our safety services, the Fire Department and the two police departments, but we appreciate you talking to us administratively or council as well. As all, everybody around this table knows, this is the Sylvania Township Fire Department. It is legally directed through a township-wide tax, including the city, and administered by the township. But you are officially our police, our Fire Department as well, and that took place decades ago. City council members may recall, a few years ago, we contemplated removing the city from the township and separating the Fire Departments into two different Fire Departments, but I think fortunately we chose not to do that. So that, that gets us to where we're at. I do have a couple of clarifications to ask you about the EMS. You're going to have three units, what stations will they be at?
We're going to have them at one, three, and four. And the Station Two will have the reserve unit that could be utilized if needed or if we have enough additional staff for the day, we do staff that and that's happened several times this year. So we have actually had four transport units on a daily basis out here.
You described to us the regional cooperation requirements of the change. Before the EMS units, when they were Lucas County, could be called out anywhere. And I'm sure that there's still cooperation involved.
There is cooperation involved in that contract and it's, it's basically a nine minute is what was in the contract. If a unit, ALS unit can't, and this is speaking just to ALS, doesn't do anything with the BLS stuff. So for advanced life support, if, an advanced life support unit, let's say, for instance, our unit is sitting in Station, at Station Three, and there's no Toledo unit available to go to SOFOs, that's going to be our call. If they can't, if Toledo can't put a unit there on the scene in nine minutes, that's our call.
The unit from Sylvania used to venture into Toledo fairly regularly. We've had stories of it being down in Mommy and the like. Do you expect those sorts of occurrences to continue?
We don't think so with the deployment map that's out there right now. Again, everybody's going to ALS, so Toledo will have, all of their units will be ALS now. Instead of a handful of BLS and only five ALS units, they'll end up having thirteen ALS, BLS units. So there's a, there's a massage and it's probably going to happen more on Toledo's operations than ours just because of their eighteen stations and where they're at. They have doubled up a couple, like Station Twenty-five over in Westgate's going to have two transport units there. So it kind of covers that whole western suburb. So I don't think it's going to happen very often, but we, we're meeting every week. Every Wednesday morning, the whole group of chiefs meets, the policy board with the members from Lucas County so that we can get everything in place ahead of time and then we're going to continue to meet after the rollout on June third so we can handle all those challenges that, that, there's going to be challenges, we just need to, to meet them.
Thank you. Questions from members of City Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Fry.
So Chief, you mentioned during the presentation that sometimes, and I've heard people tell me the same thing, I don't understand why three units show up. So could you kind of provide a little more context? So in a normal circumstance, somebody falls, hurts themselves, falls down the steps, whatever, this unit will show up and we're not going to see the other two units show up? How is that going to work?
So what, what that's called is a tiered system. Right now, we have a three-tiered system. We have a first responder, which is generally the fire truck, and all of ours are paramedic-equipped ALS. First response. The second level under the old system, it would go to your nine-one-one call taker. They'd do a little history, get some information, determine on who needs to be sent. If they determine basically from the questioning that it could be an advanced life support, that's when the Lucas County White and Orange Unit would go. Once everybody got there, assessed the patient, did whatever. Once everybody got there, assessed the patient, did whatever treatment they might have needed, they might have downgraded that to a basic life support transport rather than an ALS transport. That way, because our ALS resources previously have been so scarce in the county, transport units, not first response units. So that's why we kicked that one back in service, let the BLS transport unit do that service.
Okay. And going forward, how would that be different?
You're gonna miss the, the, the middle portion of that. So you're still gonna get the ALS first response unit, and then you're gonna get one transport unit, and they can do it all. Now, in some cases, if we're cross-staffing that day, Station Three sometimes does cross-staff the unit, that would, that would be just the ambulance. You'd only get one unit.
Okay.
Unless they need extra help.
Sure, yeah, I understand, understood. The trend line you showed for callouts, do you, do you expect that to continue?
This one?
Yeah, 'cause that's a, that's a pretty significant trend line.
We're, we're about eleven to thirteen percent every year increase in, in call volume. Overall, EMS incidents, you can see those continue to go up exponentially. Yes, with the growth of the community, absolutely.
Safe to assume you don't have eleven to thirteen percent more people every year?
We do not.
Okay. I, I, I thought it was kind of a softball question for you.
I know. Threw it right up there.
But I assumed that that was the case. I was just curious, 'cause I know that there's been an awful lot of construction of, of facilities that, that are for more seasoned citizens that may continue to push that number higher, and maybe that's just an analogy, maybe that's, maybe that's not an appropriate.
It's pretty consistent that that's about, of those EMS calls, about eighteen percent of those mainly are extended care facilities.
Okay.
And we have, we have twenty-three of them, and a couple more are gonna be coming up here that are pretty big ones, so, that are out in the township. So those, those will add to the call volume, but every neighborhood does too, believe it or not.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more from members of City Council? Seeing no other questions in the room. Captain, do you have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any questions. I would like to let City Council know that since I've been here for the last five years, I've had the privilege to work with these two gentlemen, and they've both been above board on everything we've done together. So I'm, I'm happy with the, with the choices that have been made by, excuse me, by the Township Administration.
Thank you to the three of you to take, for taking time out of your evenings to be here tonight. We appreciate it.
Honored to be here.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Richard.
Name and answer.
Yeah, my name is Stephen Richard. I live at sixty-fourty-four North Main in Sylvania. I'm going back to the termination of Mike Graham. I was not very happy reading about this in the paper. I think three trustees should have been here tonight to hear this. I thought their comments were totally unprofessional, and I think it could have been done much better. I think overall, I think it's time for the Fire Department to be governed by a board, much like Sylvania Recreation is, and not just three trustees. You can see in this story, one trustee got a second trustee on board, and they got rid of the Fire Chief. And at the very end, one trustee had an axe to grind and pretty much dragged Mike Graham through the mud. I thought it was totally unprofessional, it wasn't necessary. I think it could have been done much, much better, and I think it's, the department is, and reading their chart, I think that the, they're approaching, what, a hundred men shortly? You will be? You'll be the biggest department in the city and township.
Seventy-five.
Pardon?
We currently have seventy-five.
Seventy-five?
Seventy-five uniformed personnel.
But by, what, 2028, you'll be close to a hundred men, right? Or near it? You're gonna need a fifth station by then. But you will be almost the largest department in the city and the township, correct? Manpower-wise?
Manpower-wise?
Yeah.
Manpower-wise?
Police, streets, fire, everything, you know?
Right. Sylvania Fire, I believe, is the second-largest Fire Department in Northwest Ohio.
I'm talking about this, this community, yeah.
From the Public Security Department?
Yeah, I'm not interested in Northwest Ohio.
Sylvania Township Police Department has forty-four officers.
Forty-four?
And currently, as it stands, with sixty-nine line personnel and additional administrative chiefs.
What, what I'm saying is I think it's time that a board governs the affairs of the Fire Department through the Fire Chief. Of at least five people, maybe even seven. Where we don't have this one person that doesn't like what's going on, it gets a second person to go with them in ousting a Fire Chief.
Steve, your comment came back to me through Mrs. Westfall a couple of weeks ago, and subsequently, I've directed the Law Director to look into the possibility of proposing a Fire Commission to oversee the operation of the Fire Department. That would be a combination of city and township or elected officials. I'm not sure that the schools would be a part of that like they are in the REC district.
I was thinking that, just an overall, like Sylvania REC, yes.
I think it's important for the people on that commission to be elected officials, answerable to the voters, and we're gonna look at what examples of that are around the state of Ohio and give it some consideration for City Council and the Township Trustees to take a look at.
Okay. I want a question to the Township. Is that report that was done on Mike Graham, is that gonna be public or is it private? I'd like to read it, unredacted, complete.
At this point, it's currently considered attorney-client.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. At this juncture, it's currently considered attorney-client, Dr. Graham.
I'm sorry, I got to mince my ears. I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Yeah. At this point, it's currently considered attorney-client privilege, communication.
Attorney-client privilege.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Steve, thank you for being here tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. I think we are ready to proceed with Agenda Item Eight. We have a number of ordinances for consideration tonight. The first is Ordinance Number Seventy-One, two thousand and twenty-four. This was discussed at our council meeting two weeks ago, and it's to acquire the property necessary for the Traffic Signal Improvement Project at Monroe Street and Summit Street. And I think that the owner of the property is, has requested that we do it this way. Ms. Briney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's correct. We, we passed the resolution, we sent it certified as is required by the Ohio Revised Code. We've received no response, so in order to keep the project moving forward, as Mr. Shaw indicated at the last council meeting, there's not a dispute over price or anything like that. It's just because the property is, is a little bit in limbo right now. They've requested that we move forward with filing the appropriation action. I would just request your approval and authorization so that we can keep this project moving forward.
You have proposed Ordinance Seventy-One, two thousand and twenty-four in your packets. Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce by title only, Ordinance Number Seventy-One, two thousand and twenty-four. An ordinance appropriating the simple title for the city of Sylvania in and to serve real estate for the Monroe Street, Main Street, Summit Street Traffic Signal Improvement Projects, appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of eight thousand and seventy dollars for such purpose, and I move passage as an emergency measure.
Sir? It's been moved and seconded for passage of Ordinance Number Seventy-One, two thousand and twenty-four as an emergency measure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and Ordinance Seventy-One, two thousand and twenty-four is enacted as an emergency measure. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Nine. This one needs some explanation, and I'm gonna call upon Deputy Service Director Joe Shaw. He signed the letter of explanation in your council packets to discuss this knee-wall standard development proposal from Edge. Mr. Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of council. So we have design guidelines that are available on our website. Those were developed and adopted in two thousand and sixteen, and they cover three distinct areas of town. The one area that this knee-wall design will kind of go with is our Gateway Architectural District. It's basically our Monroe Street corridor from Main Street through the interchange and then each direction on Monroe and Alexis as you go. One of the principles that's in that design guideline is a knee-wall design, which is the space between the sidewalk and where front parking would, would occur. So if you're building a setback from the road a little bit and you've got some front parking, the knee-wall design guideline that's in there shields the parking, so to speak, to provide a little better aesthetic look to that. So it's in the design guidelines, but if you read them, they don't have any teeth into what those are supposed to look like. In my time here, we had a property, the Comstock property, that was up for redevelopment maybe five or six years ago that didn't come to fruition. It first came to light there. The project didn't move forward, so we didn't really have a need to move forward with it then. Frickers is the current one. They're doing a parking lot expansion to the west side in a currently vacant parking lot, or vacant space, and they would like to move forward with that project. But again, we don't have a standard for what that knee-wall and screening would look like. So hence the reason we'd like to use Edge. They've been involved with our downtown project, they've been involved with US-23. They're a great piece to kind of blend those two spaces of our town together and come up with a, a look that we can all, you know, be good with moving forward. We don't wanna end up with four or five different walls that aren't defined. So that's the reason for the proposal in front of you. I'm sorry, I don't have the amount. I believe it's five thousand four hundred, if I remember right.
Five thousand seven hundred.
Five thousand seven hundred, to do that work. So that's what we're asking for your approval tonight.
So to grant the section for our guidelines, so people know how to respond. Okay. Any questions from City Council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to ask, will they come and present to City Council what they've been?
The idea was to have them go in front of our Board of Architectural Review. It's like a perfect spot for them to have input on.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Would we adopt these into our zoning code, or?
I think the idea is to keep them just in-house as a design standard. So if and when these come up for site plan review, we can hand these out and say, by the way, the design principle that you read in the design guidelines, this is the standard we're gonna move forward with.
A requirement for a knee-wall is already in our zoning code? This would just be how to respond to it, a design guideline.
Joe, you may have said this, but do you have an example of a knee-wall somewhere in the community?
You know, not so much as here, maybe in Perrysburg if you frequent. Generally speaking, three and a half, four-foot tall brick or split-face masonry on the outside, some type of capstone. I don't know if that's the exact look we'll end up with here, but that's, that's why we're hiring Edge to kind of get to find that for us, what it's gonna look like.
We did a little bit of that in front of sauders. We used fencing to do it, for the most part. That's what we're talking about.
Exactly.
Separate and hide the parking behind it a little bit.
So let me understand again the eager anticipated process. We're gonna hire them, they're gonna do the work, they're gonna do their, take their work to the Board of Zoning Appeals, or, or the Board of Architectural Review, and then that, and then the Board of Architectural Review will adopt those, and that'll be our policy? Yeah, I don't like that. I wanna come back here. So I'm gonna vote no on this. Okay, if we wanna change it?
I'll make a commitment that it comes back here, that's fine.
Yeah, I, I want council to approve these standards.
Let's have, let the Board of Architectural Review do the negotiation with them and review it and make a recommendation to City Council and bring them here for final approval.
Appropriate.
Yeah, I think this is a zoning standard that we're gonna, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna do that informally. So I would like to, if we're gonna adopt a policy on how we're gonna do that, I want this council to review it and.
Well, it's fifty-seven hundred dollars covering zoning. Is that different from what we're asking for in the proposal, right? That's a different thing than guidelines.
I think it's just guidelines and policy. I don't wanna have public hearings or approval of the change in the zoning code for this. But I think it needs to come back here for your review and approval. You okay with that?
The commitment is a, the administration will bring this back to council for review and comment. Okay, I'll go with that.
We'll bring the Architecture Board reviews recommendation to you for your final approval. Okay. That sounds like a good path to me. We do have Ordinance Seventy-Two, two thousand and twenty-four in the packet tonight. Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce Ordinance Number Seventy-Two, two thousand and twenty-four by title. Accepting the proposal of Edge Group to provide professional landscape architectural services to prepare Monroe Street knee-wall detail appropriating funds therefore in an amount not to exceed five thousand seven hundred dollars, and we pass it as an emergency measure.
It's been moved and seconded for approval of Ordinance Number Seventy-Two, two thousand and twenty-four as an emergency measure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and Ordinance Seventy-Two, two thousand and twenty-four is enacted as an emergency measure. We are now up to Agenda Item Ten, and Ten and Eleven are similar in that we are updating the administrative structure of two departments in the city to reflect changes in those depart, or those smaller departments. One is Division of Parks and Forestry, the other will be the Utility Office. These are because people have either retired or have left the city's employment, and we are updating the organizational structure to match what we've done in other divisions of the city. First one is in your council packet, says Ordinance Seventy-Three, two thousand and twenty-four, and it is a result of Pat O'Brien announcing his retirement next month. And typically, we do not have that kind of a superintendent. We, we do a foreman going forward. I think, Kevin, these are your recommendations. Why don't you tell us what we're doing here?
In the other departments, Streets, Water and Sewer, as the superintendents in those departments retired or resigned, actually all retired. So as they retired, we restructured and started the, the chief person in each department is in the foreman position. And we adjusted salaries for foremen, crew leaders, and then on down to the bargaining unit positions. In the Parks Department, Pat is the, the last superintendent that, that we have still with us. And with his retirement, we will restructure that department in the same manner. A couple of years ago, the existing foreman that we had in that department retired. And so we did not adjust the, the salary in the Parks and Forestry Division because we didn't have a foreman in that position. But now with Pat's retirement, the restructuring of the department that will occur, it's now time to adjust that foreman's pay to the same foreman pay as in the other departments. So that's, that's what it is before you. We're just establishing that rate of pay the same as the other departments.
And this is in the budget?
It's actually a budget savings, but.
Because we're reducing.
We're actually eliminating the superintendent at the highest level.
So you're technically not hiring anybody for that position, is that what I'm understanding?
We are hiring a foreman. We're not replacing the superintendent. We'll be hiring a foreman.
Mr. Allen, will the foreman have the same responsibilities as a superintendent? Mr. Aller, will the foreman have the same responsibilities as a superintendent? Or are they dispersed amongst the department?
No, he'll have the same responsibilities as superintendent, as the superintendent. The superintendent's position description has just become in the foreman position description. The responsibilities remain the same. Basically, what we've done is trimmed the administrative staff in each of those departments by a person. And now that the Parks is created for that. The structure used to be superintendent, foreman, crew leader. And now we have foreman, crew leader.
All right. We do have ordinance number seventy-three, two thousand and twenty-four to restructure the Parks and Forestry Division. Mrs. Westphal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number seventy-three dash two thousand and twenty-four. All members of council having received copies in advance, I'll read by title only. Revising the administrative, departmental, and divisional organization of the city and the codified ordinance is thereof, by amending Sylvania Codified Ordinance Section one twenty-seven point seventeen, Division of Parks and Forestry, amending Sylvania Codified Ordinance Section one thirty-nine point zero three E three, to set the salary of the Parks and Forestry foreman annually commencing July first, two thousand and twenty-four. I move final passage of ordinance number seventy-three, two thousand and twenty-four as an emergency measure.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number seventy-three, two thousand and twenty-four as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and ordinance seventy-three, two thousand and twenty-four is enacted as an emergency measure. On to agenda item eleven. This is a similar change, but the titles are different on this one. Mr. Aller, please walk us through this one for the Utilities Office.
As you may or may not be aware, our previous Utilities Manager resigned from his position. And so, with that, I've always been told when, anytime someone leaves a position, it's an opportunity to take a look at how the arm is set up and reevaluate and see if you can do things differently. With his resignation, it kind of put, well, then kind of, it did put the burden of performing his duties on the two individuals that we had left in the office, whose titles actually I think are secretary of bonds, which are, is kind of an odd title for that position. They have performed exceptionally in that time. They, we haven't skipped a beat with our billing, with our shut-off programs, which luckily for the city's sake, they don't. But billing notices and things of that nature have gone with virtually no hiccups whatsoever. It's our intent with these changes to basically have those two individuals continue to handle those duties with the title of billing technicians. And they will handle all of the administrative reporting, billing, you know, phone calls, some phone calls based on the, because of the billing and things of that nature. Our Water Department and the Meter Techs in that department will handle the physical part of the project where we, if we have to make adjustments for data collection units or things of that nature. Those two individuals that are existing in the department will be reclassified to billing technicians. We will then go to the, out into the public to hire a customer service representative, which will basically serve in the, in the role that those two existing employees previously served. They'll answer the phone calls. They'll help people at the counter. They'll, you know, they'll be a customer service representative. They'll handle those types of duties, not being as involved. They will be to an extent, but not being as involved with the actual billing process and meter reading and things of that nature. So, that's the way we decided to move forward with the department with council's approval of these positions. And I think that we'll, we'll continue to be just fine and operate well into the future in that manner.
Mr. Aller, just a question here. So, you're shifting some titles and responsibilities around. Are you eliminating a position or are you just changing a position, the customer service representative actually, and these other two positions, Joe, and for the other person that's left?
Yeah, we're kind of, the staff, the number of staff will be the same. Just be work responsibilities are shifted a little bit and titles different. Yep.
Will there be one of those three people designated as the lead in Utilities Office?
The billing technicians will kind of have that because, you know, we have vacations and things of that nature to cover. So, those two billing technicians will be the primary people to handle things. If any questions beyond that point, we'll, we'll go to the, now the service, the service director, hopefully soon we can say deputy director. But, you know, so it'll go up the ladder a little bit differently. But they should, they should be able to handle many of the questions.
Very good. Further questions for Mr. Aller?
So, with these modifications, Mr. Aller, compared to where we started the year out, what's the net budget impact? Is it more or less or about the same?
It's less by, not much, by like.
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand, ten thousand dollars less.
Thank you.
All right. We do have proposed ordinance seventy-four, two thousand and twenty-four in your packets to revise this organization of the Utility Office. Mrs. Westphal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number seventy-four dash two thousand and twenty-four. All members of council having received copies in advance, I'll read by title only. Revising the administrative, departmental, and divisional organization of the city and the codified ordinance is therefore by amending Sylvania Codified Ordinance Section one twenty-seven point zero eight, Section of Utility Office Service to restructure the staffing of the Utility Office, amending Sylvania Codified Ordinance Section one thirty-nine point oh two A, to set the salaries of the new positions of customer service representative and billing technician annually commencing May twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. I move passage of ordinance number seventy-four dash two thousand and twenty-four as an emergency measure.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number seventy-four, two thousand and twenty-four as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and ordinance seventy-four, two thousand and twenty-four is enacted as an emergency measure. Thank you. Thank you for your explanations, Mr. Aller. The next two items are for utility aggregation agreements with Palmer Energy. With, because of that, Mr. Frye will need to leave the table because of a conflict of interest. I need a motion to allow Mr. Frye to push away from the table. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and let the record show that Mr. Frye is no longer sitting at the table and a part of the conversation or voting. With that, we have ordinance twelve, I'm, excuse me, agenda item twelve, ordinance seventy-five, two thousand and twenty-four. This is for electric aggregation consulting services. Ms. Brining.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you all know, Palmer Energy has been our consultant since the inception of our government aggregation program in two thousand and has saved jointly with all the NOAC communities, saved our customers an estimated hundred and twenty-four million dollars on the electric side. We have a great relationship with them. I think they do a tremendous job, not only on the assisting with aggregation stuff, but last week at our meeting with Tito Edison on the LED lights, a representative from Palmer was there to help us through those negotiations and remind them of their commitments that they made. So, they offer, whenever, and the staff there is wonderful. We've gotten probably a hundred phone calls in the last couple of weeks for.
I know the court has been handling those calls.
Yes.
For those that, on the gas side.
Yeah.
All of our residents and businesses received a postcard that has natural gas, and it doesn't read very clearly.
Right.
It says that you're out of the aggregation. If you don't do anything, you go back into the big group. Well, that's not exactly true. It's not the whole story.
But Andrea Flowers at Palmer is wonderful in answering anybody's questions and is always willing to do that for us. So, it's a ten-year term. Five other communities have already approved it. The ordinance is considering it next week. I think we have until mid-July for all the communities to approve it. So, but I would recommend we move forward with it now.
There are no questions?
I do have a question. I have one question, and that is, the program consulting fee is based on use. What does, our current use results in what kind of program consulting fees?
I can get that information for you. I don't know that. Because we don't, it's not a pass-through. I don't really see that number.
The master's contract is held with Lucas County. I could turn to my right and ask if you know the answer to that?
No, no. I can get the, I can get, no, we can't. I can get the number for you and.
Is that, do you have that number for our community or only for the county overall?
I can, I can get it broken down both ways. Sure.
This comes up in the next.
Yes.
Next item as well.
And there's a portion, you know.
I apologize for not bringing this to you earlier. I was, I was in court all day in a late getting to this. We don't have to do this tonight. I would like to know that number. I feel responsible to our community to know what we're paying for this. But don't get me wrong. I'm very, very impressed with the work Palmer Energy has done, but I don't feel comfortable signing a blank check. I don't, I'd like to know that number. Brian, you think I'm off? Tell me.
I think it's never, for the amount of work that they do, I, I mean, I could, I can get that answer for you.
I'm not questioning the fee. I'm questioning it. I don't know what it is. Okay? That's all. And I know we're not paying it, but we're acting here on behalf of our constituents.
There's a list of all those communities that it's broken down to on page three.
The agreement, right.
There's also villages of Delta, Howland, Abbotus, and Lake Townships. So, I, because it's not pressing, we can do that.
And if council.
That's councils want, or we can go ahead and do this and report back.
Yeah, if council's will is to move forward on this tonight, I'm fine with that.
And report.
And report. I mean, I know Leslie will get back to me or, or I'll be grumpy with her too.
I would feel comfortable moving forward, but I would want to report that. I advise the ladies that we're, it would be, we would not be not accepting it.
Right.
We just want the facts so that we can speak to our constituents and be honest and transparent.
Okay, I'll defer to that, that view, and we move forward. Thank you.
We do have proposed ordinance seventy-five, two thousand and twenty-four to authorize this aggregation contract. Mr. McCann.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce by title only ordinance number seventy-five dash twenty-two forty, authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into an agreement with Palmer Energy Company, Inc., to provide electric aggregation consulting services for the city of Sylvania residential and small business customers. I move passage of ordinance number seventy-five dash twenty-two forty as an emergency measure.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number seventy-five, two thousand and twenty-four as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and ordinance seventy-five, two thousand and twenty-four is enacted as an emergency measure with the requirement that the law director get back to all of city council with a financial cost update. And I'm, hopefully she can do it tomorrow if they give us that, give you that information that quickly. If not, we'll be back as soon as we can.
Yeah, I'll give you, provide an update either way tomorrow.
That's great. Thank you.
Turning to the second page of our agenda, we have the second aggregation agreement. This one is for natural gas services. It's proposed ordinance seventy-six, two thousand and twenty-four. And the savings since two thousand and one is. Anything different to say on this one, Ms. Brining?
Nope. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Questions from city council? All right. Then we have ordinance seventy-six, two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. McCann.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Same said for the. Thank you. I'd like to introduce by title only ordinance number seventy-six dash twenty-two forty, authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into an agreement with Palmer Energy Company, Inc., to provide natural gas, gas aggregation consulting services for the city of Sylvania residential and small business customers. I move passage of ordinance number seventy-six dash twenty-two forty as an emergency measure.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number seventy-six, two thousand and twenty-four as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and ordinance seventy-six, two thousand and twenty-four is enacted as an emergency measure with the same reporting to council as soon as we can about the cost of this arrangement. Thank you. With that, Mr. Frye's conflict of interest is over, so I'd like the record to report him returning to the table. We are up to agenda item fourteen. I have in your council packet a recommendation from service safety director to put an existing aerial lift or bucket truck on GovDeals for bidding. Mr. Aller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the vehicle that's listed there, council actually authorized in February of two thousand and twenty-two to replace this vehicle. We finally received that replacement in March this year, so a little over two years. And we are ready to now dispose of the vehicle that's replacing the nineteen ninety-four GMC aerial lift truck.
There are no questions. We need a motion to put this on GovDeals. Mr. Frye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd make a motion to authorize the administration to put the nineteen ninety-four GMC aerial lift bucket truck on GovDeals for bidding according to the memo from Mr. Aller of May the twentieth.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the listing on GovDeals of the nineteen ninety-four aerial lift bucket truck. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and that listing is authorized. We're up to agenda item fifteen. Fifteen is a necessary step. I think city council has previously authorized Mr. Shaw to be our new, our new service director. We haven't done that either? Okay. We have been contemplating whether or not to separate the positions of.
Safety and service into two different individuals. Mr. Aller was the first one to carry both responsibilities. I've been discussing the time requirements and looking for another possibility, but have come to the decision that we want to leave safety as well as service with one individual. And with Mr. Aller's pending retirement here at the end of the month, it is time for council's confirmation of my appointment of Joe Shaw as our new.
as our new director of public service. I appoint him and ask for your confirmation. Mr. Frye.
I'll make a motion to confirm the mayor's appointment of Mr. Joe Shaw as the director of public service and safety as of June the first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to confirm the mayor's appointment of Joe Shaw as our director of public service and safety effective June first. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Shaw.
As long as it's okay with Mr. Shaw.
This is one of those.
I've got big shoes to fill.
Tremendous.
Had lots to learn from over the last ten years already.
Here, here. Moving on to agenda item sixteen, you'll find a letter in your council packets for appointments to the Sylvania Tree Commission. We are fortunate to have some very good appointments to go on here. If you read the credentials of these three individuals, Ms. Luffler is a, has a science degree with a major in biology and a master's in science education and is teaching at Timberstone Junior High School. And I was interested to read that she won a scholarship to go to the Monarch Sanctuaries in Mexico. That would be something to see, wouldn't it? Mr. Brady Cullenberg is the, one of the, is the property manager for Camp Maekanda and is a member of the Society of American Foresters. And Mr. Anthony Haddad is with us tonight and brings a passionate for, of interest for our street trees and does give a citizen's viewpoint on this and other issues around the city. I announce these appointments to you and request your confirmation of these appointments. Mr. Frye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like, I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Ms. Stephanie Luffler, Mr. Brady Cullenberg, and Mr. Anthony Haddad to the Sylvania Tree Commission.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to confirm those three city of Sylvania Tree Commission members. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and congratulations to Mr. Haddad. We appreciate your service, your willingness for that service at the city. Agenda item seventeen is committee referrals and, for reports, and we added a, a Sheetz update. You will see in the Board of Architectural Review and the Plan Commission that both, that Sheetz was tabled in both of these. And they requested a thirty-day extension. I'm going to look to Mr. Shaw to explain the latest of what is going on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our zoning administrator had reached out to them last week for an update to see where things were sitting. They had told us they were waiting on more information to come in on a traffic study that's being done associated with the interchange project. We're massively reconfiguring how that's going to look, where our signals are. They, of course, want to do their due diligence and make sure how that plan relates to what's going on at their site. Arcatis is the consultant that's working on that for ODOT. They were supposed to have their study, their traffic signal timings ready by the end of next week. I did not see that, so I don't think that they've met that obligation. But hopefully within the next week or two, Sheetz has a copy of that and then they can do their due diligence to decide how they want to move forward.
Sheetz did not send representatives to either of the Board of Architectural Review or the Plan Commission's meeting last week. We just pushed it to the next month at their request.
Mr. Shaw. Are they looking for something specific in the plat design? Are they looking at traffic numbers only? Are they, is there a criteria that they're trying to look for to move forward?
Yeah, I think in the initial traffic volume demos that at least I got a chance to take a look at, they have some challenges to work through. They're a very large trip generator. And on Monroe Street, we need to make sure that that access is thoroughly looked at on how that's going to work. So I think with what they wanted to put together in their traffic study, they just want to make sure their driveway and how that reacts to what's going on at the interchange and plating and gaps and how to pull out. They just want to make sure they're accurate with what they're saying.
Do we have any requirements that they're, have to work through? Or is there, I don't know, curb cuts or, or signals or other considerations?
Sure. Like access is a big thing, access management, and that's something that Monroe and Alexis need help with. For the last, you know, probably fifty years, it's been tough. So when sites like these that have large trip generators come, we just need to make sure that what goes on with that site works and is as safe as it can be for everybody using it. So I think that's what they're working through. What was proposed, we had some challenges to work through, and so I think they're doing their due diligence.
The issues, the issues, Mr. McCann, are whether they have one curb cut or two and whether those curb cuts are right in, right out only, or just right in. We are working through those details so as not to create new traffic safety concerns on Monroe Street.
That's what I was.
Yes.
Yes.
I should have added to the agenda, I didn't think of it, I'm sorry. I thought I should share with the group an update on Plumber Pool Pump Room because I think that was a discussion at the council table. And I wanted the group to know that the equipment didn't all arrive. One piece didn't make it, so they were not able to update the pump room before, pump room before the holiday weekend. So they've moved forward with filling the water. Good news is, in their ultimate professional processes, they closed up at the end of the year as though it were going to be used again. They didn't just close up thinking they're going to get their new equipment. So they don't anticipate any trouble this year. They'll do that upgrade in the fall and should not be any problem. But in case something would happen, I would want you all to be aware. Fingers crossed the pump room lasts one more summer.
Avoiding the issue that come this weekend, they wouldn't be able to open. That's, that's what we're avoiding. Destruction technicians are few and far between at the moment, and I've had a concern all along that if somebody broke one of those big fittings in the plumbing, we would be out of action for a while. So we're going to open as scheduled and hopefully make it through the season before it all gets replaced in the fall. Thank you, Mrs. Westfall. Any other committee reports at this time or committee referrals? The only information items are the Board of Architectural Review meeting minutes and the Municipal Planning Meeting Minutes, as I refer you to. I want to take a moment to point out again that this is Mr. Aller's last council meeting. He will be retiring at the end of the month. He has done many improvements to the benefit of our city, for the benefit of our residents and businesses by updating and improving systems all around the city. He came to us and has made many improvements, like the recycling containers, like the many grants we received to line our sewer pipes and to, he was my point man on negotiating for the water contract work as well and has been at the table for many safety issues in regards to EMS and emergency dispatching. He has been an integral part of our city and my administration and will be thanked very much for all you've done. You will be, you will be missed very much. Not to say that Mr. Shaw will not be working to fill those very big shoes, but we will miss you very much for all the innovation in economies you have brought to our city. I want to reiterate, you're all invited to a retirement luncheon for Mr. Aller on Thursday, May thirtieth, at eleven-thirty in the second floor of City Hall. If you'd like to come and thank him personally, or you can do it tonight, but come into that assembly as well. You've all been invited, I think four of you have indicated you are coming, so that's terrific. Publicly, Mr. Aller, my personal thanks on behalf of myself, city council, and the residents of the city of Sylvania for all you have done for us. You are a tireless public worker and it is very much appreciated.
It's been a great place to work. Every person that we hired, I told them, you will not find a better place to work. And you have a very good staff, top to bottom. You know, I was always, always told, leave, wherever you're at, leave it better than, than when you arrived. And hopefully I've done that. I know I've done that in my, in my replacement. I wish we could get him some help, I'd feel a lot better, but we'll keep working on that. But it's been a great place to work. There's, there's no other place from a municipal or government standpoint that I would have even considered going. Very happy that I made the decision thirteen years ago to send in an application and resume. And then a year later, George I. R. went up to his office. He said, hey, you got a couple minutes, sit down, I want to talk to you about something. And started as a safety director, so it's been a great, great thirteen years. And if anybody asks me, I will tell them it's still a great place to work, so. Thank you. It's been, it's been a joy, it really has. I've enjoyed it. And hopefully you'll see me around. I'll still be here.
We're asking you not to change your cell phone number.
Chuck was nice enough to release the number to me, so we're good there.
All right, thank you, and we look forward to your luncheon next Thursday.
At minimum, Mr. Mayor, could we just maybe give him a round of applause?
Absolutely. With that, we are at the end of our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Then moved and seconded to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and this council stands adjourned until its next meeting two weeks from tonight on June third at seven-thirty PM in these council chambers.